So, good morning and welcome to the Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, September 7th, 2022. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call where the clerk police take the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I'm ladies and gentlemen, I'll speak as the rules that council will state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before the council and profaneing will not be permitted. Once you recall, please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Elena Zaitsov.
Good morning, council members. I am Elena Zaitsov. I've lived in the Oak Cliff neighborhood of South Oakland for over forty years. The zoning part of the neighborhood plan for Oakland is going to be before you. What an ironic name, as it is not a plan for the neighborhoods of Oakland. It should be called the Business and Developers Plan for Oakland. With only five of thirty-five people on the steering committee representing residents, this result is no surprise. Perhaps in other neighborhoods, the mix of institutions, universities, nonprofits, and residents would be balanced, but in Oakland, the residents were outnumbered from the start. On the steering committee, I learned what it meant to be a token. Whether the phrase "existing neighborhoods" should be in the vision statement is still being decided. That tells you something. Once again, we have something that caters to businesses and developers, and the tax-paying residents are left to plead to preserve their neighborhoods, the very neighborhoods Pittsburgh boasts about. I know, three years is a long time to work on a neighborhood plan, but more work is still needed on it. Like much else, COVID has partly to blame for that. Personnel changes were also a factor. We residents should not get a lesser product because of that. Through being on the steering committee and two action teams, I've reached the conclusion that one goal of the plan is so the zoning board sees fewer cases. That takes the citizens' voice out of what gets built in our neighborhoods. We will get zoning we don't want and have no recourse about it. More work needs to be done on boundaries so residential areas aren't rezoned to allow commercial. More work needs to be done on the point system, which was written entirely by city planners after all the meetings were concluded. A building can reach maximum height through points which don't benefit the community. More work needs to be done on the heights, as heights even the zoning board wouldn't approve and the planning commission questioned will now be code. What a gift to developers. Zoning shapes the built-in environment. Please do not destroy the character of our neighborhoods through this zoning. Send the zoning portion of the Oakland plan back for revision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next vice speaker is Dr. Ronald N. Miller.
Seventeen November, 2021, PA Eastern District. It will be directly relevant very soon. I have a connection with Helsinki, Finland, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for the Presidency 2024. This is from May, 10th May, 2022. It was a public comment which I made. A concern of this council is clearly housing and homelessness. Resolution 2022-0300, which is now 2022-06776, if I understand this, on the Limited Equity Cooperative, I reject this. I rejected it in May. I reject it now. But I think that this council should seriously consider what Finland has done, is doing. It is number one in Europe in housing. It has a Housing First policy. Housing First in Helsinki, to focus on that. There are houses for low-income LI buyers of public properties. We have a lot of them in the city. They have contracts with the city government. And the second part is that there are houses that are built, one-story, usually, one-story, two rooms, and a bath, that are built for the homeless, but the homeless have contracts with the city government. In the United States, Pittsburgh City Council, I think, should take direct control of housing. And that means one disband the Pittsburgh Housing Authority. The statistical reliability of the HA, according to our numbers, is not greater than two on a ten scale. Its divisional communication less than three. Its citizen responsiveness less than one. Two, designate Pittsburgh government properties for LI and HL houses and establish contracts with citizens and require a job. This eliminates the inclusional-exclusional problem and interference with private real estate properties. And three, direct intergovernmental diegenesis of housing authority away from the housing authority to this council. And that means, in my view, under the President of Council, that there should be nine district HAs, and that would lead to, it should lead to, higher reliability in housing databases, high R inter-district housing interoperability, and a higher number of audiovisual profiles on the people that we think need it.
Thank you. Our next vice speaker is Naomi Mudd.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This was read at my husband's funeral. Michael J. Holland Reflection by Italian Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Holland touched the light with many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew that most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer us. He worked tirelessly, both jobs enthusiastically, his entire career, in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, and friend. Michael J. Holland lived a bold life as the vicariously so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. Councilman Kraus worked out a deal to take McKinley Park from our council district. Now it is time for Bon Air to get the long-held school into the city's control. The school needs to be torn down and a green space in its place. A memorial green space is most fitting. A plaque is installed at the school due to the line of duty death of firefighter Mark Linda, who lived his entire life in Bon Air and has gone to school at Bon Air School. Open deals in Bon Air. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of vice speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good morning. My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, Katy River. I'm sorry. I'm trying to talk too fast. These three minutes go fast. Okay, I'll stop that, but I live up in the hill. I brought a paper down. It says Voter Registration Center. This weekend, we had Tony Campbell that came and played jazz for the seniors. Now, our previous police officer, Brenda Tate, was the host. And she was saying that we're getting cards. We were getting these letters, and it tells you about voter registration. She had said, even if you're gonna come in, this is supposed to be a mail-in, but she said, bring this with you if you do come in, and they will destroy it. She said, just throw it away, and you shouldn't. So, listen, citizens. You see these voter registrations? Just take it down there when you come to vote, because your voice, you only have a voice if you vote. I have a voice because I come down here, and a lot of you guys won't. If you would come down here, we'd have more of a voice, because they get scared when a whole bunch of you come in here. I think they know when they be wrong, but when you got one big mouth like me, they can just say smart stuff and look at me and treat me mean. But you know what? God is good, because when I marched in that parade, Labor Day Parade, and there's people coming to me and say, keep speaking. Ms. Smith, I want you to hear this. Keep speaking. Keep speaking. And they were gonna help me find Fetterman to tell him to come down here, and they say that he should come too, not just me. I thought of it. Then I was gonna have him holler, "Fetterman, Ms. Brown is looking for you." Little black woman with the big mouth at City Council. Listen, I'm not proud that I speak loud, but I do. I even asked the minister, please pray for me that I don't speak so loud. Reverend Cooper's did, and he said, "What?" I said, "He said, 'No, the old people won't hear you.'" So, seniors, I know you're glad you can hear me, because they hear me and won't listen. They talk over me, and I am upset. The reason why I am so upset is this. I'm listening on the radio. They're talking about coming down and speaking. Do you understand? I am seventy-six years old. When I went to school, we were taught history, and I loved history. The teachers taught us, your civil duty, this is what I'm doing. And citizens, that's what a civil duty is. You come and tell them, because they don't know what they don't know. You realize that. I don't know what I don't know, unless you tell me. I had a father. My father taught me. I would be sitting there looking, what's wrong? Nothing. There is something wrong. How can I know if you don't tell me? So, I'm telling, yes, listen to me. And then I'm reading here. I wasn't here, but I see that they have him as acting. I'm told that the other lady, she retired or quit or whatever. Okay, I'm gonna stop. I learned how to do that. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good morning. I'm Bernadette from Beachview. I did some homework for you guys last week at the council meeting, finding out about all the different signs, the majority of them. Did I do that? Anyway. Can I get more time? Anyway, when I left here, I was on my way to Mercy Hospital, and they, I taught to one of the road crews for Triangle Construction. And they told me they contract twice. They contract with the signage company and people to direct the traffic. That needs to be narrowed down. On the homeless, so many properties owned by the URA are covered in ice and are not maintained. My heart is with the homeless. My older son did his graduation project interviewing a man named Bob, who was an engineer, got divorced, and she took him for everything, and ended up living in the streets. We have all these properties that are sitting empty, not maintained. I can't tell you how many properties on Broadway Avenue, even their investors from the URA are not maintaining their properties. Do not remove the ice, which makes it difficult for me or anybody trying to walk down a sidewalk. Couldn't we teach these people how to fish? I know you know what I'm talking about. Give them a roof. If they need a roof over their head, a lot of these people are very innovative. They could, in exchange, sign a contract, have these properties maintained. They're sitting everywhere. URA, I'm sorry, is not maintained. But that's my idea. You got empty properties. You have a roof that a lot of these people could be getting in, learning plumbing, learning maintenance on their properties. That's an idea.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers wishing to speak? Seeing none, before one.
There's one more. Sorry, I didn't know. Good morning. My name is Flora Williams, and I live in 715 Mercer Street at the Katy River Towers. I'm speaking about the speed bumps that we need going down Beaufort Avenue, because when we're going out to get on a bus, there's cars coming down so quickly that we have to step back on a curb and sometimes miss our bus for our safety. So, I am trying to put a plea out that we can get some speed bumps going down Beaufort Avenue and Webster Avenue. And that is what I would love, because I'm speaking about the security at Katy River Towers and the speed bumps there. And I've had some feedback, which I am very happy to say. By coming down here, two or three people have come to me, and we're trying to work out something. So, just by standing here and speaking about it, there are some people that are willing to help and do something about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, before one, our standing committee agenda, Madam President.
Yes, can I call for an executive session for personnel matters involving the clerk's office, please, for tomorrow? I have a motion, a motion for an executive session?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
An executive session will be worked with the clerk to be scheduled. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
That now moves us on to our standing committees' agenda. Our first meeting of the day is finance and law, which is chaired by myself. We have one new paper, Bill 695.
Bill 695, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to City of the City Code, the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from Pepsi of $10,000 to be deposited into the operating budget of the Bureau of Fire.
There a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to our invoices. We need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
We also need a motion to waive the rule so we can approve an EMS submission, which is about $155 over the $5,000 threshold.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any, and you oppose? Any further discussion on the question admitted? Seeing all, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Everyone say affirmative. Need a motion to approve the interim department?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And the first, first approved. We need a motion to approve the department.
So moved. Second.
Any, all those in favor say aye? That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. One supplemental paper is Bill 710.
Bill 710, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to City of the City Code, the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from the Allegheny County District Attorney's Office of $33,883 for upgrading recording systems and interview and interrogation rooms of the Bureau of Police.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in opposed say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Our recommitment paper is Bill 629.
Bill 629, resolution establishing the Healthy and Safe Pittsburgh 2030 Initiative and Advisory Committee.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Councilman Burgess?
No, no, but I think we're supposed to hold this for two weeks.
Okay. Is there a second on a motion to hold for two weeks?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for two weeks. That moves us to our new papers, which is Bill 696.
Bill 696, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into relevant agreements or execute required purchase orders for a Hyundai EDR kit with G I T America at a cost not to exceed $7,725.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to our Public Works Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Coghill. One new paper, Bill 682.
Bill 682, resolution authorizing the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a commodity agreement with PBSC Urban Solutions for the purchase of equipment for the Healthy Ride Electrified Project at a cost not to exceed $1,095,000.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Van Nuys Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. One refer paper, Bill 661.
Bill 661, resolution accepting a new street name would ring court in the 23rd Ward of the city of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in June of 2022. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code, Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to hold one week. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And the bill be held one week. That takes us to our new papers. First is Bill 698.
Bill 698, resolution providing for the designation as a historic district under Title 11 of the Code of Ordnances of Certain Properties Known as the Murray Hill Historic District Expansion, located at 1163 Murray Hill Avenue and 1165 Murray Hill Avenue in Squirrel Hill in the 14th Ward, city of Pittsburgh. The owners of 1165 Murray Hill Avenue support the nomination.
Motion to hold for a cable cast public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for a cable cast public hearing. Bill 699.
Bill 699, resolution amending Resolution 336 of 2022, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into an agreement or agreements with Women for a Healthy Environment for the contribution of an amount not to exceed $45,000, the collection of $50 in payment to the city of Pittsburgh per each participant, and to assist with organizing renovation, repair, and painting, training for general contractor license holders in connection with the city's led safe ordinance. Women for a Healthy Environment shall pay the city at a rate of $100 per participant, which amount includes $50 contributed by Women for a Healthy Environment and $50 separately collected from each participant for the payment in the amount not to exceed $90,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just gonna abstain from this vote, because I'm not sure if there was a RFP.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
One abstention.
Any opposed? One abstention. Affirmative recommendation. Thank you. That now moves us to our Innovation Performance Assets Management Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Strasburger. Our one new paper is Bill 697.
Bill 697, resolution amending Number 44 of 2022, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement or agreements with Computronics USA, Inc. to extend the term on a month-to-month basis at an additional cost not to exceed $789,531.
Motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to leave our last meeting of the day, Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Gross. Our first new paper is Bill 683.
Bill 683, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for City of Bridges Community Land Trust Site E, Zero Hazelwood Avenue, Ward 15, Allegheny County.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 684.
Bill 684, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for proposed land development located along Grandview Avenue at the intersections of Augusta Street and Shaler Street, including those parcels identified on the attached Exhibit A located in Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Any discussion?
No, I'm just, I may, I may ask to recommit this next week. I just want to talk to the community a little bit more about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 685.
Bill 685, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh and Epic Development LLC or related entity for the sale of Block 11J, Lots 9596 in 101 in the 1st Ward, 6th Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And you oppose? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 687.
Bill 687, resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh, designating URA as the city's agent for administration of the 2022-2023 Home Investments Partnership Program.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. I simply, before we vote, simply want to note that two weeks ago, along with this bill, there was another bill regarding a cooperation agreement for our CDVG dollars that were to go to the URA that we're already budgeted for and that affect all our districts. However, that bill was not introduced two weeks ago, and I don't believe it was introduced yesterday either. So, I'm gonna ask the URA to please follow up with Councilwoman Rose to understand why the bill was not introduced, so that hopefully, come this Tuesday, we can have that companion piece also introduced. So, for Bill 687, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention. Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 688.
Bill 688, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh and Communion LLC or a related entity for the sale of Block 27A, Lots 125 and 126 in the 5th Ward, 6th Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 689.
Bill 689, resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the following publicly-owned properties in the 15th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 56C, Lots 239, 240, and 240A, Zero Flowers Avenue, north side of Flowers Avenue, between Nansen Street and Glenwood Avenue.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 690.
Bill 690, resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the following publicly-owned properties in the 5th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 10K, Lot 150, Zero Kirkpatrick Street, west side of Kirkpatrick Street, between Webster and Wally Avenues.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 691.
Bill 691, resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, and into the following publicly-owned properties in the 15th Ward of 15th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 56K, Lots 65A and 67, 35 and 39 West Elizabeth Street, Council District 5.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 692.
Bill 692, Resolution Authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interests, if any, in and to the following publicly-owned properties in the 3rd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 11A, Lots 36 and 42, Block 11E, Lots 304 and 306, North Side of Reed Street between Heldman and Robert Street, and East Side of Miller Street, North of Caldwell, Council District 6.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. And lastly, Bill 693.
Bill 693, Resolution Authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interests, if any, in and to the following publicly-owned properties in the 1st Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 11K, Lot 245, Zero Testan Street, South Side of Testan Street, West of Seneca Street, Council District 6.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That does exhaust our agenda for today. We do have meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meeting at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, September 13th and Wednesday, September 14th, respectively. Speaker registration closes at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday and Wednesday morning. Also, next Wednesday, September 14th at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 592 relative to creating three new base zoning districts and other zoning amendments. Speaker registration closes at 12:00 p.m. on 9/14. To register for these meetings, please fill out a signed form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members?
Just thank you, Councilman, for getting us through this agenda so quickly and for all those participating via Zoom. And just to say, our sergeant, our council solicitor and Heather were keeping track to make sure we kept our, maintained our form, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your assistance.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make sure that the record reflected that Councilman Wilson was joining by Zoom. It was brought to his attention that he could, we could not hear him, so he wanted to make sure that.
I heard him.
It was coun, okay, he was counted. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, we, just for the record, we had Councilman Burgess, Councilman Wilson, Councilman Kraus, and myself via, joined remote week this morning. If, if nothing else, I'd be wishing to excuse the absent member to approve the minutes in adjournment meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We urge you. Thank you all.
Have a safe.